We are the Brothers.
But uh... Um, yeah.
Alright then.
That's what happened. Good job. Okay. Let's just go for this. Not that way. I just wanna go straight through there.
You can.
I know, but I don't wanna fight those fucking dogs.
You don't have to. Just run past them. We need more, uh, blood vials though.
I'll fight this guy. These guys. Oh, watch out.
Oh, they called. Uh, run.
Yep.
They followed.
Wow, I am like barely making it out of here.
They're still going, Jesus.
So much for that.
He should. Wait, go back up?
Haha, sure.
Oh, nevermind.
Good plan.
If you can get back up to the bridge, there's a set of stairs on the other side that go down to that room that you came up with the two guys that were hiding in the shadows.
Yeah, that's what I was... Oh, that's right, cuz they were, yeah.
If you go down that's, those stairs and into that door, I don't think they can follow you in there.
Okay. I'll give that a shot.
Nice jump.
Thanks.
Got some air that time.
You're such a douchebag. I need, I do need to kill some dudes then. Oh, does that hurt? Didn't light the fire there?
Hahaha.
Sorry. I'll, uh... Just gonna like, I'm just gonna do this, I'm not gonna use any vials, I'm just gonna kill as many motherfuckers as possible.
Go for it.
See? Get, get, get some blood vials real fast. Then I can start over. I mean, you know, unless I miraculously do really well. Getting a lot of bullets too. Day yum. Look at all them bodies. Look at all them bodies.
Is it loud enough for you to hear like all the wailing and moaning that's happening in the background?
M- maybe, I-
Not right now, but it was a minute ago.
Yeah, I mean, I did hear it, but...
With the, I've got headphones in so I can monitor the, uh... The mic and game audio, but like, anytime you walk around and there's like wailing or moaning in the background, it's like right here. Sounds like it's right behind me.
Uh-huh. Yeah, you know you're gonna die, so you're backing up. Okay, now I'm gonna die.
Hahaha.
Hey guys. Welcome to the party! Wow, that worked.
Yeah. Guy started backing off, he's like, damn.
Haha, yeah. It's like, oh shit, haha. Just took out three guys. Back up too. Ah!
Oh, you did.
Ohhh. My plan...
And see, he's got, actually it's his left arm, he's got a really long left arm.
Yeah.
And they're all like that. Interesting design, just to give them one long ass arm.
I wish I had a long ass arm.
Well, I mean, we can pull on it a little bit, see if it gets longer.
What, my ass?
No, your arm.
No, but I want like an ass arm.
Oop. Do you want like an arm coming out of your ass?
Think of the possibilities.
Think of the possibilities.
Hahaha. Multiple, much, much many mucho possibilities with an ass. Yeah! Okay, okay. 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 I forget I have a gun.
Hahaha.
Hey, you know what? I'm gonna try fighting this guy.
Go for it.
Let's see how, uh... God, that guy's big.
Worst thing that could happen is just murder.
Oop, but I think I made the wrong move there, and I'm getting out of here.
Holy shit!
Uh...
He can leap. I'm gonna lock on before he shoots.
Whew!
Missed dodge.
Ah! Well, I got him down to what, half health? Or was that my health?
Uh, no, you got him down like half health.
I think I can beat him.
That headbutt thing though is intense.
Yeah.
He like goes all the way to the ground.
Yeah.
Just watched him do it on replay, he's like-
Yeah, exactly.
Wish I was that limber.
Gotta hit my toes. Where is that guy?
Actually, if you go down the ladder, I think he's right there.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. You're correct, sir.
Plunging attack. Super plunge. Missed.
Haha, well yeah.
Well, he looked closer to you from up there.
He did, yep. Huh?
Headbutt pile.
Yeah! Trick is-
He's right over there to your right, mhm.
Hey baby. Back out.
He killed you in one hit!
I was like, I was so shitty about it too. Like, hey baby, I'm back!
He's just like, whoo, conk! What did you say?
He didn't even realize I was there, he was just turning around like, what? Alright. I got you this time, big guy. Come on, coming. Just wait. Uh, I hate that I can't like slide, or at least that I haven't figured out how to do that yet.
I don't know if there is a way to.
I like that. Alright, full health.
Hahaha. It's funny cuz you respawn so close to this guy, so it's like he murders you, and then about 20 seconds later, you're like, "Let's try it again!", just come back around the corner. He's like, "Again? Seriously?"
Hey, big and ugly. Yeah! Ow!
I think he won that exchange.
Yes, he did. Hey, I fucked him up too though. Shit, I knew that was gonna happen. Ah! Oh my gosh! Damn it!
Aw, he still hit you.
Yeah. Man, he just doesn't let up.
No.
He is unfazed by my attempts at his life.
Seems like it's just like a Souls thing to put an enemy really close to where you start, who's just like beatable, but just really fucking hard compared to everything else.
Yeah.
Cause Dark Souls 3 had the Crystal Lizard in the starting area, that was a huge pain in the ass, and this guy-
Yeah.
He's hanging out right over here.
I actually liked the Crystal Lizard though, like, that guy was fun to fight.
You don't like this guy?
Took me a while, huh?
You don't like this guy?
Well, you know.
Said you liked the Crystal Lizard, like you don't like-
As if I didn't like this guy, yeah. Uh, but, no, I- I do so far, I mean, he's tough as shit, but I'm gonna feel really accomplished when I beat him.
You should.
Also, I'm just curious as to what I can get from him.
Probably nothing.
Ow! Dodging does not work.
Nope. You know what you can get from him? Headache and frustration.
Yeah, but then again, if I die, all I do is start right back where I-
That's true.
So, I don't have to redo like eight hours of gameplay.
Just move the, uh, the lamp to where it's right next to him, so you just keep respawning right next to him.
Yeah, right. Okay. Ah! I can do that too. Ouch! Not fire. Fire bad.
His first day in Yarnham. Hello. Everyone tried to kill.
What the fuck? He's got a gigantic backswing. Fuck you!
His weapon is fucking huge, and he's fucking huge.
I got one hit on him at least. Well, his like swing is like a full 200 degree turn.
His bad time in Yarnham.
These are bad times.
Come back to life, get murdered immediately.
By giant hooded figure with enormous backswing.
He would make amazing tennis player.
He missed tennis ball and hit on backswing, and still win. Why are you- Oh god, I hate that. Okay, he's not dropping any more vials for me. This is the last time I'll- Nope! Damn it!
Way to nope out of there.
That felt pretty cool though. Damn it! I wanna catch this dude by surprise.
I don't think he wants to be surprised at this point.
Okay, you know, I was behind a wall, but-
Igor smash!
Arcane haze. The tiny smatterings of haze that are found in certain ritual materials sometimes require special rites. Materials in a holy chalice ritual. A finely tailored bordeur dress.
Bordeu?
Bordeu. Bordeaux?
Bordeaux?
Bordeu?
Bordeu?
Bordebordeur.
Bourgeois.
Boudoir.
You're going a different way this time.
Yeah. I'm just, uh, carrying on. Hopefully someone will- What? Fire bad. Nope, I don't need to go that way. But you're gonna waste, sir. He at least always gives me something.
What a nice guy.
What a nice guy. What a great guy.
Well, that was lucky. I wasn't actually facing him at any point during that battle.
Nope.
Ah! Fucking dude!
Did you forget about that guy?
Yes, every time! What? What did he say?
I don't know, something about finishing.
It sounded like he said, "Please dad finish." What? Finish what exactly?
I hope that's not what he's-
That's pretty, uh, that's pretty dark, man.
Dark? He just has a really weird fetish. I don't know.
Or he's just one of those people that calls everybody dad?
Are there people that call everybody dad?
Yeah, we all know like daddy-o or- Is this where it was?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, you, that one time. But not recently.
Fucking- I almost threw the controller down. Okay, I'm trying to... Trying to just keep calm, you know? It's gonna be fine. Ordinary bullets have no effect on beasts, so quicksilver bullets fused with its own blood must be employed.
I mean, if you, if you can put together a good string of kills and and get some, uh... Get some blood echoes going, you can use your bold hunter's mark and go back and level up.
That's true.
And then come back a little bit more leveled and able to do more damage.
Yes, that's true. Ah! Okay, he didn't do much damage to me. God, if, dude, if, oh.
Stay out of the fire.
Can I kill the shit out of this guy? Can I bring him, yeah, your blood vial!
Can you bring him?
Bring him back and then kill him again. Hate you.
Away, away! Away!
Away? See? He always gives me something. Nice guy.
Mhm.
Got your number. Baby, I got your number. Ha ha ha! Unguarded shit! Fucking dick hole. Do you think six vials is enough to fight that boss guy?
Sure, give it a shot. Hey Mango Neckbeard, subscribe! Thank you so much!
My gosh, hey thanks Mango Neckbeard!
Congrats on being a pab!
Everybody's a pab.
Subscribe, we don't even have subscribers. Mango Neckbeard followed, thank you.
Followed. Lovely. Well, thank you for the follow, sir, or ma'am.
I hope Neckbeard would be a guy, but-
Oh my gosh! Did you see that?
No, I wasn't thinking-
He was literally just like fucking like swinging every, like every half a second. He just shot me in the fucking back, and all I was doing was dodging, but I couldn't get past him, so I was just like diving into his stomach, and he just kept missing. Where the fu- Knock! Oh, don't reckon you're from round here. Yeah, but you're not gonna let me in.
Nope.
Bitch. Look at those dogs, look at the dogs' eyes. That's awesome.
I think he has your... Yeah, he had your blood echoes, that's why his eyes look like that.
Oh! Whoa, the one in the cage had them?
Yeah.
What a dick. Hey, shut it. Excuse me, mister puppy?
Senior puppy?
May I kill you, please? Shut up. Yeah. I think... Yeah, wait. Right? Up here? Up here? You do?
Sure.
You do? You do? And then... Ooh, looky, looky what I found. I found a thing. Baby, I got your money. Don't you worry.
Is that a song? Hello!
Ah! Nope!
Friend or foe?
Foe? Definitely foe. I'm gonna heal first, cuz I'm actually getting to a point where I'm okay. This guy, I really like the way this guy looks.
Oh, that guy?
This guy.
Okay.
Oh hey, and I got my blood vial back.
And, uh, good looking guy.
I still don't- They could just be turning around to be like, hello? Visitors finally after so, oh my gosh!
That's how I felt, uh, when you went down into the sewers and fell down to the bottom where there were the guys like laying on their stomachs. That's how I felt like they were at first, cuz they were just like slowly walking over to you and not doing anything. It's like they're just coming over and like, "Excuse me, sir, could you, could you spare a few pennies?", and you just start hitting them in the face with an axe, and they're like, "Ow!"
Oh, gosh!
Why?
You didn't have to!
And they're just trying to protect themselves by hitting you back.
Yeah!
Next thing you know, you're getting gangbanged by paraplegic obos.
That's a sentence.
We've all been there.
Have we? Dude, how'd I get 10 vials?
You haven't. You haven't been gangbanged by paraplegic obos. How'd you, you lost your insight somehow?
Um, I probably died enough that I just, you know... Lost it. I'm trying to figure out the best way... Okay. Fuck it.
Nice.
That was fucking awesome! Ha!
Oh, watch out, watch out!
Yeah. Yeah, I was fucking concentrated on the stupid ass bird.
Probably not a good choice. Oh boy.
Damn it!
You're right there.
Mhm. Dangling, upside down. I was reading, no, it stopped there. Well, on the upside, I've got vials, all I need to do is get through there. And just run back now.
Yep.
So... And then, you know... Inevitably die again when I get to that boss.
Come on, man, gotta be positive.
Ah!
You're dirty, are you still awake? Jesus, go to sleep. What are you doing? Are you just gonna let him kill you?
Yeah.
So, yeah. So, that's a throwaway.
Yep.
Just a little bit.
Yep, fine with that. Alright, let's go. Let's do this.
This is the peak of pab? Like the peak pab time?
Okay, thanks.
Tuck and roll.
Don't you shoot me in the back again, you son of a bitch. Okay, right here. There we go. Come here. Come here, buddy.
Okay, in the room with the old man in the wheelchair, there's another door.
There's another door?
Yes.
Okay. A cat? Like on the, like that door?
Yes.
Okay. Why... What's on the other side of it?
Oh yeah, I forgot about that. Go through the door and then up the stairs, and there's a shortcut. I forgot about that.
To the guy that I was trying to get to?
No. But to where you start.
Yay. Cool.
Go up the stairs and then-
At least getting some shit.
Open that up. I forgot about this.
Oh. Smite. Oh my gosh!
Yeah. You don't have any blood vials.
What? I don't have any blood vials?
Uh, blood, uh, echoes. You don't have that many.
Oh, this is, oh!
This is where you spawn.
This is where I, okay.
There's just a shortcut now this way instead of having to go all the way around.
Right, right. Okay. That is fantastic information, and I thank you. So it'll be a lovely addition to my replay.
What?
Thank goodness he's-
What can we use since we don't have insight?
What does insight do, again?
Insight allows you to see things differently, like when you don't have insight in a hunter's dream, "That girl looks like a doll." Oh, you can't use the blood echoes, right. Okay, I forgot. Like, you can't level up unless you have insight.
How do I get insight?
Uh, by seeing a boss gives you like at least one insight, and then by killing a boss gives you more insight. Like, you, you had one insight because you saw the cleric beast. If you kill the cleric beast, I think it gives you three insight. Three or four.
Damn it.
Keep hurting yourself. Stop hurting yourself. Stop. Stop hurting yourself.
Stamp. Okay. I just want you. Come here.
Who threw that rock?
That was fine. Oh my gosh! Haha, I'll get there eventually. Pebble. I got my pebble back.
That's good.
Holy shit, I'm back here.
Yeah.
Look at that.
Go fight him again.
Okay. Alrighty.
Do you have any more Molotov cocktails?
Nope.
Go into your inventory. You got one at least. You can use the oil urn, and then a Molotov cocktail along with that.
Do not need that. Okay. Looks like... If I throw this, will it lead him in a different direction?
I don't think it's gonna do anything to him since it's a boss.
Yeah, I kinda... Figured that myself. Can I just save, please? Just right here?
You can save after you kill him, right here.
Yeah. Shit, no, I need... I need to do this the proper way. Then this. There we go. Oh, I'm scared. Okay, no.
You got it.
Square throws some shit.
Mhm.
Square throws some shit!
Throw some shit at him.
I am going to start off by throwing some shit. Dodging.
There you go.
Okay.
The rest is all you.
Oh gosh, okay, fucking- Wow, how did I not die?
Cuz you got skills.
Uh, yeah, that's it.
Ah, that's what I'm going with. Okay, Nerd Dirty says you, you picked one of the weakest starting builds.
Well, I figured I would. Okay, that's working.
Shoot him at. Just try to stay behind him. Just trying to stay behind him.
That's where I'm trying to go. Okay, well, he seems to be following me, so... Okay. Oh my gosh!
There you go, stay on his ass. There you go, go hit him in the face.
Damn it. Shit. Fuck!
Oh shit.
Damn it!
Okay! Cool. Well, we will go ahead and I think in tonight's stream here, and we'll pick it up again next week. Thank you to everybody who hung out with us, to Nerd Dirty, Credible Sauces, Jilch, and thank you so much to our new follower tonight, Mango Neckbeard.
Lovely name, sir. Or ma'am.
Hope you enjoyed, uh, watching the frustration that is Bloodborne, and we will catch you next time.